23 meeting for the city council, the city of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kirk Krespin. You know, spring is here now and things are starting to green up. Hopefully, they'll really start greening up if we can get some rain going. But in the meantime, one of the things that Rob was speaking about a little bit later today is our Love Where You Live program that we've been doing for the past few years. This is an opportunity for our residents to use the free dump weekends for the next four weekends in a row. So you'll have the transfer station as well as the city dump. Any residents of the city of Lamar can go and dispose of their refuse, whether it's cleaning out your garage, cleaning out your yard, whatever it may be, to help make our community look beautiful. So I want to encourage everybody to take advantage of that first off. But more importantly, I also want to say that this is a great opportunity for any of those organizations out there that are looking for community service projects. This is a wonderful opportunity for you to reach out to your friends, your neighbors, your church, see if there's anyone that is homebound, disabled, that simply doesn't even have a pickup, that may need help hauling things to their dump. And it would be a great help for everybody if you can do that as a community, as an organization, or simply as just a neighbor. So I'd encourage you to do that if you can. And with that, we'll move on to the beginning of our meeting. We have Anthony Latier here for our invocation. Anthony?
Father, we just thank you, Lord, for your presence here, God. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the stewardship that's in this room, God. We thank you, Lord, for these leaders, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you would just take any weights and burdens off their shoulders, God. I thank you, Lord, that you're going to begin to do a new thing in the town of Lamar, God, and raise up just wonderful leaders ready to impact the community, God. We thank you for pouring out your blessing and peace upon our city and upon its leaders in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilman Bellamy, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The time is now 7:03 PM. I will call the meeting order. Roll call?
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Here.
Gary Jenkins.
Here.
Kirk Krespin.
Here.
Mike Duffy.
Here.
Manuel Temes.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
All right. In reviewing the agenda, I didn't see any items that need to be modified. Does anybody in the council see anything that needs to be changed before we move forward?
There's one item.
On the agenda?
No, no, I apologize. No, there isn't.
Okay.
I'm behind this 100 miles there.
All right. With no changes to the agenda, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. It looks like there is one item for a check that needed to be separated out. Check number 96161 for Gonzalez Unlimited for $750. For those who are watching, anytime it's one of the council members is receiving a check that's not associated with reimbursement of their duties, we vote on that separate to give them an opportunity to abstain. So with that said, has everybody looked at the consent agenda?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve minus that item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda minus check number 96161 for Gonzalez Unlimited. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign. Joe, you can vote.
Unanimous in favor of.
Okay, now we need a motion for the item that was separated out.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve check number 96161 for Gonzalez Unlimited for $750. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of with Councilman Gonzalez abstaining.
All right. So moving on to the agenda, we have the audience participation portion. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council tonight from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on. As always, if you do have questions that you would like to get answers to during the council meeting, you can always message through Facebook or through YouTube, and we will review them during the miscellaneous items at the end of the meeting to discuss them. So we'll move on to the city treasurers report. Kristen?
Yes, thank you. I had two things to report on this evening as far as grants go. We resubmitted the pickleball grant to the state outdoor recreation office by March 31st, so we should know in a couple of months if we receive that grant or not. We reworked the application a little bit and got it resubmitted. And then we had the second round of our grant with the CPW for the archery range. We had a presentation last week on Thursday. It was a 30-minute, we had a 30-minute time slot, and I would just like to thank Rob did an excellent job. He led the team for the presentation, and he did a great job, and I appreciate him very much. Thank you. And he prepared the PowerPoint, and we all got him the information, and I think it went really well. It was pretty short, but we had our representative from our local office, and he said that's usually a good thing because they didn't have a lot of questions. So we should know maybe sometime in May whether we're going to be awarded the grant, and then it may take from June to March 31st to get the notice to proceed. So they're not sure. Sometimes it's faster, sometimes it takes the whole time, so they weren't sure. But that's how that grant is looking. But that's all I had for this evening unless anybody has any questions for me.
And how is the, I guess the only question I was going to ask is about the request for proposal on our community development master plan. I know you're working with the county on that still. Is that going okay?
I prepared our draft. I have it complete except for a couple of exhibits I'm working on. I should have it ready to go tomorrow. I didn't get any feedback yet from the county, but Rob has reviewed it and didn't have any changes for me, so I'm ready to go ahead and get it sent out. I've got a list of consultants I've worked with at CML, DOLA, different places. I've got a list of consultants that have done city and county comprehensive plans in the past, and so we're going to hit everybody on that list. We'll be mailing that RFP out to them, and I have a timeline in there that we are going to review one more time before I get it sent out, so.
The county did acknowledge that they got it from us.
They did.
So they know, it's not like we just sent something and we're not waiting. They said, yeah, we got it, we're reviewing it.
Yes, he responded back.
So we're waiting for some feedback before we...
Yeah, I just thought I might throw it out there to them because I know that we want to kind of run this at the same, I wanted to make sure the timeline would work for them, kind of give them a working document if they wanted to kind of follow that same document. And so I did get an email back from Mark saying that he had received it and they will review it, and I haven't heard anything back yet.
Okay.
But that one is moving forward.
Okay, it'd probably be good to get some feedback if we can before we, you'll do that before you submit?
Oh, yeah, and then I'll have to probably adjust the timeline a little bit, you know, as far as advertising and things like that. But I wanted to, you know, just throw some things out there. I'm also going to try something new. I've got a, Thomas, I've been working with Thomas. We've got, we're setting something up on the website now where the RFP will be available on the website. Any addendums that get done during the process will also be loaded on there so people have access to them. So we're going to work on that process a little bit. I think it'll make it more efficient. They'll still have to mail them in to me by a certain date, you know, and I require them in a certain format, but so we're working on that as a new idea on this one, so.
It looks good, though.
Yeah, so we're moving forward on that one.
All right. Does any of the council members have questions for our city treasurer?
No questions here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the city clerks report. Linda?
Okay, so our February sales and use tax collected in March was $368,737.23, which was up 10.5% or $35,048.72 from 2022. Our year-to-date collections are $1,294,476.13, which is up 5.41%, or $66,428.11 from 2022.
Okay. Any questions on the sales tax report?
And then I also have an election update. Information for the upcoming 2023 coordinated election on November 7th, 2023. A local Lamar citizen, Mr. Bates, presented a petition to allow for the gathering of signatures to get an item on the November 7th, 2023 ballot regarding retail and medical marijuana dispensaries in Lamar. All documents were reviewed by myself and city attorney. Original document was denied due to missing statute requirements. Again, Mr. Bates presented a petition with changes made. They were again reviewed by myself and city attorney. No evidence found to deny petition. Mr. Bates was provided a letter of approval with very clear requirements for his next steps. In Lamar's charter, it states that citizen initiative petition requires the gathering of 15% of total ballots cast in the last election. The total ballots cast in the 2022 election for the city of Lamar was 2,426. 15% of this would be 364 signatures required. Mr. Bates has until close of business on July 31st, 2023, to submit petitions. If he chooses to wait until July 31st, 2023, and he has not obtained a correct amount of valid signatures, he will have no further time to gather signatures, and there will be no question on the ballot regarding marijuana dispensaries. Additional items for the 2023 election will be council terms. Positions that will be on the ballot will be the following. Mayor-at-large is a two-year term. Ward one, a four-year term. Ward two will have a four-year term and a two-year term, and ward three will have a four-year term. Call for petitions will begin, I will begin advertising on July 20th, 2023, and running for three weeks. Those that are interested in running will be able to pick up petition packets no earlier than August 8th and return no later than August 28th, 2023. That is all I have at this time.
August 8th through the 28th?
Yes, 8th through the 28th.
Okay. Okay. Can you read those wards again? I had ward one.
Ward one is a four-year term.
Okay.
Ward two, we have one four-year term and one two-year term. Ward three is a four-year term.
Okay.
The two-year term is due to the appointment of Councilman Duffy.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Linda at this time? Seeing none, we can move on to the city administrators report.
Okay. As the mayor mentioned earlier, Love Where You Live, community cleanup weekends, free landfill and transfer station weekends, and it's every weekend starting this weekend through the, May the 6th. At the transfer station, I believe it's a one-truck limit, one-pickup limit, and unlimited at the landfill. And there are a few things that you can't bring, so make sure you look at the flyer that says what you can't bring there, chemicals and things like that, so. Coffee with Rob, April 19th, I'm going to be at the Truck Plaza, and April 26th at Hickory House. The Trailblazer Theater, maybe some of you heard some of the practice going on there just a little bit ago. Their Clue onstage at the Cultural Events Center, Lamar Public Library, April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and then the next week at 28th, 29th, and 30th. Tickets are sold at the public library. I think you get a $2 break if you order before, doing it at the door. EV Ride and Drive Friday, April 14th, 2023, 2:00 to 6:00 at the Otero College Campus. And let's see, projects updates. All right, this is the one I've been looking forward to. I don't have to say two more weeks. We actually have, and we will on Wednesday, have a ribbon cutting for self-serve fuel out at the airport, so no more two weeks. It's real good, we're good to go.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
When will that be?
Wednesday. We're going to do a little ribbon cutting, take some pictures, and it'll be good.
At noon, you said, right?
What's that?
At noon, you said.
Is it noon? Yes, noon. Noon, we're going to do that. Be fun.
Okay.
Okay, and miscellaneous, any questions that I can answer?
I had a couple of questions. I was asked about the signs again for North Gateway Park. I know we had talked about putting some underneath industrial park, just to kind of point that direction.
Right, we did get approval from, I do not have the ATA date when they're coming. If you're talking about the ones that are on the highway, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we were trying to get approval from CDOT to put right underneath the industrial park arrow.
And those, in my understanding, they've been approved, but to get them from them, so it's not us, our signs, it's their signs.
Okay.
And what about signs at Escondido on 14th Street?
Now, those, we had to, I know that Rick's not here right now, but we did have a company lined up to buy them or to build them and send them to us. They went out of business and won't do them anymore, so we are going to go out and get new people to do those signs, and next meeting I'll have somebody identified. This is going to be a smaller, a few to show you if we want to do that for the, our signage throughout the city, so this will be an example for you guys to see.
Well, if you could follow up with CDOT, I know with spring here, everybody's going out to the fishing.
I saw.
I've had a couple of calls with people asking, how do I get to North Gateway?
Yep.
So I've directed them to the app, but having the signs...
No, we'll get some signs done.
So, and then the only other thing I was wondering about was, I know Kyle and Kristen were working on that lighting grant that we got approved on. How's that project going?
We've got most of the lights installed.
So the ones on all the bathrooms and the parks are installed. The bases are installed at the skate park. We're kind of waiting a little bit on the ones in the pocket park because hopefully we're going to have another project going, we can time them so we can do both at the same time. We did our first report today. We got it turned in. We requested that first 60% that was approved last time. We've requested reimbursement for that. Once the project's done, then we'll request the other 30% or 40%.
Okay. So the ETA, so in the pocket park, you're doing another project, you said?
Well, hopefully. That CDOT project that we were finishing up, the lighting and heating elements in the pocket park, so we're going to try to run those in conjunction.
At the same time.
Steph's been over that one, and we're just working with getting the track lighting ordered and the heating elements in, and that way that we're, they're not double doing, or so we're kind of trying to run that in conjunction if we can.
Okay.
If it falls within our timeline. That grant is done in June 30th, the one that Kyle was speaking about.
When is the lighting grant due?
That's the one I'm talking about.
That's the one, okay.
Yeah.
So you'll have them all anyways by June 30 either way?
It has to be done by June 30.
Yeah.
So, and Keith is very aware of that. He's doing a great job getting on top of it and getting things done. I think they're just waiting for the concrete to cure at the skate park before they put the lights up, so.
Are those solar?
No, they'll be motion activated, though.
Okay.
So after park curfew at 10:30, then guys can drive by, and if they see lights on, then they can go there and see if somebody's over there after park curfew.
Okay, cool.
Hold on, Kyle, a second. I can add one thing.
Uh huh.
Are we still going to be able to do our work session next week?
Absolutely.
All right. I would like to let you guys know that we're going to, we have a toy, we want to show the council, and we're going to do a work session for all you guys to try it out and see what, some of the, this is the best training I've seen for the police since I've been part of them, and I really want you guys to see this. So next, next...
It's the virtual reality training.
The VR, it's way beyond Oculus type stuff. It is a really, really good system, and you guys come in and put you through a couple of scenarios, let you go to the range, that kind of thing, so.
Okay. That'll be fun.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. All right, any other questions for the city administrator?
Oh, I did have one question in regards to the dump weekends. If an organization is jumping in there to kind of help, how is that with the one load per day? Is there...
One load's only to the transfer station, so if they, to the dump, it won't, it'll be unlimited. You can go out there to that.
Okay.
Okay. Then you could probably let them know who you're doing it for.
That's right.
That's what I was asking, is if an organization is helping several individuals.
Might be best to just give them the list of who they...
If you got, whoever's going to help, and we let our guys know, they're not going to stop anybody from going out there.
Cool. All right, anybody else?
Can I ask for an update on the crate packing building?
We didn't, we didn't do anything else on the packing building. We're talking about for the asbestos testing.
Doors and windows.
Doors and windows.
Tree playing in the city street.
No cleanup. And did we already contact them with the, or as far as the, what am I thinking of?
Banned building.
Wait, yes, they, we have sent out, well, that's just for the commercial businesses.
I just mean like the city cleaning up with...
Yeah, but I think it's privately owned now. It's not an actual business in charge of that now, right?
Right. It's still commercial property.
Okay, well, we've sent out all the letters, and I do not know, Stephanie, do you know if anybody's responded for that packing plant one? No? Well, no, we have not moved, and that's on me. I've not moved any further on that packing plant.
Okay. I was going to ask if Kenny Davis and I were engaged as far as, you know, the cleanup of it. Okay, okay.
And I think the concern there is basically covering up the windows and doors so you don't get access, kids don't get in there and that type of thing.
Right, but the process will be, if they don't respond, and they, then we'll, they'll have to get the same type of municipal court date and, you know, that kind of thing. So as far as, do we have a process for going out and putting, you know, card, not cardboard, plywood over all this, that would be something that we haven't done in the past. We could do, but.
Okay.
I do have a question about the building over on Par Menter and Division, that blue building.
Iver Hills.
No, it's across from Iver Hills.
Old Amos?
Yeah.
Old Amos Energy.
Gas company. That one's in pretty bad shape. I don't know if anybody lives there, but it's kind of a nice or just like the other things.
I will have to look that one up and see what the current status is on that one.
Okay.
That wasn't on my list.
I know, I forgot, sorry.
I've noticed broken windows in that particular building, too.
I think there was one other one that one had mentioned before, and this was in reference to guard cell signs, things like that.
Oh, I had mentioned two.
Yes, I know it's, I don't remember what we all decided since it's going to be a year, but with the wind blowing and stuff, people need to be courtesy, have courtesy to come and pick up what they're putting down because with the wind that never blows here, we find them in our yards. They're in our yards, and it's not fair that we have to come and pick up their stuff.
That is, that is correct.
So I would like to have you talk about that and say what the rules and do's and don'ts are of the police.
Well, if they're placed on any, it's not private property on their own, it's illegal. And so if we find out who owns it, like if it has this address, it has their address usually, so it's kind of easy to find out whose this is. We have to, we tell them to pick it up. If they refuse, then that would cause the next step of a citation, but usually they all clean them up once we go tell them that you got to clean this up. So if we get it, if we were told and identified this is somebody, it's in my yard, we can go out and get it and bring it to them until they're going to clean it up.
Now, is there, I know generally you would just call them up and ask them to come pick it up, but if it's a repeat offender, I mean, do we just, do we do something as far as finding and fees?
So if somebody sees them, or the guy sees them, we'll go and contact them, obviously, tell them, look, you got to go pick them up, you can't put them on. If they have permission from the property owner, though, there's nothing we can do. So the only time we can really do anything is if they're on our property, on trees, on the right-of-way, wherever it is, then we can do something. But if somebody puts in somebody else's front yard and they have their permission, then it is what it is. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. We keep track of them. We draw case number every time we have one. So if we were to contact somebody two or three times, yeah, we'd probably start writing them tickets. You know, the best thing is always voluntary compliance. Whenever we go over and tell them, hey, go pick them up, they do. I'm not aware of any repeat offenders, not seeing that there aren't any, but I'm not aware of any off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. So, well, that's good to know. Wanted to share that with the viewers, so I'm glad you came up to tell us.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
It's Kyle.
Okay, last chance. Any other items for the city administrator?
No, none.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and correspondence from the council. Do we have any items from the council that needed to be liaison reports or correspondence issues?
I don't have any.
All right.
None here.
Here.
And we had a public safety meeting, but I wasn't able to go, so I'm going to let Rob talk about it.
Well, we, we had a few people show up, but we did not have enough to, or they had a meeting, but not an official one, so we were still trying, we still have one spot open, and we would like somebody to apply to be on the public safety board, so.
Okay. So if you're interested in getting involved in the community, the public safety board is a big one that could really use some help, and we'd encourage you to apply.
Can you mention some of the requirements that are needed to be on the public safety board? For those that are listening that don't know?
See, that, we don't have any requirements yet because they have not finished the...
Bylaws.
Bylaws yet.
Okay.
So right now, just as long as they go through our application process, we do criminal background check, and once they're done, we say they're eligible. If they add residential requirements and things like that, that's, that's something they have not done yet.
So that's position open for them to get involved with the...
Right.
Help with the bylaws.
That's correct.
And if I might add, I think this is important because of things coming up with the public safety committee.
Well, there's some good ideas already about some partnerships and, but the first project we've given everybody, and I'm not running the board, I'm there to help with our staff and things. I want this to be their chance for input and actual access to our process to get involved and to, you know, get some actions done. So I let them come up. I will tell them whether they're following in the right direction, whether something's illegal or illegal, but bottom line is we are allowing them maximum participation, and I don't want them thinking that I'm putting something in there.
Okay.
Good.
Mike, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Reports?
No.
Anne Marie?
I do. It's with great regret and a whole lot of excitement that I tender my resignation from the city council as of tomorrow morning, so I'll be a city council member for the next hour or two. I am getting off the council to become an employee of the city of Lamar, and I'm excited.
Yes, so Rob contacted me a few weeks ago, and of course, we've had some major, some very important positions in the city of Lamar that have been open for quite some time. There's been the Parks and Rec director, we've had multiple positions throughout the community, but one of the main ones is the community development director, and that's been a position that's hard to fill. Now, this, the interesting part of this is that I didn't know until the last minute until they had already made the decision because Rob had, was with most jobs, had a committee of either peers or individuals that would join in and help select the right person for the job. So, um, I found out after the end of the selection process that they had chose the best person to be on that position is one of our very own, Anne Marie Crampton. She's been very involved and very active in the community for many, many years. Um, as the president of the PEP board, she's been involved through economic development. As the mayor pro temp, she's been involved on the city business side of it. Um, she's just very well-rounded and I think we're, we have a great selection in that and, uh, we're excited to see where it goes. You will be missed on the board though, and missed as my mayor pro temp, but, um, we do truly appreciate everything that you've done for us. And with that said, we do have a little bit of a plaque here for you. So of course we have, uh, you know, having any kind of a council member leave is always difficult. It's, uh, but here's to a new chapter. We have a card here for you, signed by the council and some of the staff. Uh, more possibilities than you ever thought were possible are on the way to you. Uh, we're all excited to see you move. So we look forward to watching you grow on that. And I know you'll be on the different side of the city council, but if you'd like to meet me up front.
What kind of shoes?
In ten shoes. We'd really like to kind of photo here, photo opportunity. And the plaque says, Anne Marie Crampton, in appreciation for your years of service to the city of Lamar as Ward One and Mayor Pro Temp from 2011 to 2023. Quite long.
That's a long time.
Thank you very much. We also have some takes and refreshments that we'll, uh, invite everybody to afterwards, uh, after the council meeting between our executive session to congratulate her on her move and thank her for years of service. But, um, of course with the resignation of Anne Marie from Ward One, we'll now be accepting applications for anyone that is interested in filling your position in her ward. Those interested must be from Ward One, which includes a boundary as of south of East Olive Street and east of South Main Street, except the portion located on Parkway Drive, north of the Fort Bend Canal and west of Parkview Avenue and east of Main Street. So if you're not sure where Ward One is, we have a ward map on the city of Lamar website. Um, and also you can call the city clerk and she would help guide you on that and make sure that you are in that ward. But per Lamar City Charter position, Lamar City Charter, this position must be filled within 30 days of the vacancy. So within 30 days from today, we need to have this position filled with, uh, interim. So applications will start being accepted tomorrow morning, Tuesday, April 11th, uh, up to 4:00 PM. And then on Friday, April 28th, uh, through Friday, April 28th of 2023. Applications will be reviewed and interviews, interviews will be conducted prior to the council meeting on May 8th. If needed, a vote will take place towards beginning of the council meeting on May 8th to determine who the new council member for Ward One and the oath of office will follow thereafter. So if you are interested in getting on the city council meeting, uh, the city council as a member, now is a perfect time to do that. Um, of course this position will be only till November. You'll have to rerun in November for the election, but at least, um, you'll get an opportunity to try it out. So we encourage anybody that would like to. Uh, with that said, as far as I'm concerned, I really didn't have anything more to report. We have a few items on the agenda that we'll discuss in the, uh, for our executive session, but, uh, I have no other items. Is there anything else from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to new business. The first item on the agenda for new business is to approve proclamation number 23-03. A proclamation of the city of Lamar declaring April 27th, 2023 as Arbor Day and April 23rd through April 29th as Arbor Week. We have members of the tree board here today, like to invite up. Would you like to speak on the proclamation first before we read it?
Um, well, or I can give you a little rundown of what we're doing this year.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If that'd be okay? Okay, anyways, I'm Jane Felter and this is Jack and Kim Van Hook and the rest of our members were, um, busy, so they couldn't come. But, um, we did the poster contest for the fifth graders again this year through the Colorado Tree Coalition. And the winner was Anthony Rosario and the runner-ups were Grayden Fernandez and Jason Al- Al-Livas. So anyways, Anthony's, um, poster is up in the Denver area and they'll make a final, I think the final date was March 31st, so they've probably getting ready to decide who the grand prize winner is, but they do have some nice things they're going to actually. It used to be, um, they used to be put on display at the state Capitol Bill- building, but they aren't anymore. Um, now they're put on display at the Botanical Center. And so that's kinda where, and they're gonna give away free tickets and they have some nice gifts for the grand prize winner and we have one twice over the past so many years. And then, um, like we said, April 27th is gonna be our scheduled Arbor Day program and we're going to plant 150 trees and they're just bare root trees. We're gonna do it at the nursery, which is the Ira Pollin Nursery and it's over there located close to the Hope Center. And, um, so also Drew Griego, we work closely with Drew and he is, um, they're, uh, setting up a brand new, um, drip system, so, because it was looking pretty sad. And then we also rented a tree spade again because we don't have a, um, tractor that will operate our, our tree spade. It's, uh, it's just shot. So anyways, we rented, um, one and so they're going to take some of the larger trees out of the nursery before they get too big where we can't transplant them to our, you know, our parks and other areas that are needed. So we're gonna plant 150 and then we are wanting to open up the other big section, which would be to the, um, south side of the nursery, but we have to contact Amos Energy because there's, um, still gas lines under that area because that used to be a trailer park. So we're going to do that here shortly. I just haven't had time. I've been running around outside of Lamar. But anyways, um, they have, I think they've probably got the tree spade done, that section done. And then, um, so what we're wanting to do is have the mayor.
I can read through the proclamation.
Come up and read the proclamation and then sign it for us, please. Do you have a copy?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna just read it from here.
Okay.
Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce living giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. So do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Yep. Yeah, it's not working.
unanimous in favor of?
All right, let me come up here. With the approval, now therefore, I Kirk Cresspin, Mayor of the City of Lamar, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Thursday, when, Thursday, April 27th of 2023 as Arbor Day in the city of Lamar, Colorado, and I urge all the citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect your trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and the future generations. Nated this 10th day of April, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
And then she will have a certified copy.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. I do have one quick question. We used to have plaques in here and we have a new one that was sent this year. And it's for Arbor Day because this is our, our 32nd year. And so I was wondering, do you know where the plaques went that used to be on the wall? Does anybody know?
Yeah, we have them in storage and we've been working on getting it. We're gonna get a, or we've been talking about getting a, um.
Case.
More like a case to put out in the hall and put them up in there.
Okay.
And we do have them safely stored in a locker.
Okay, well, then should I just keep them at my house until you finish up?
That'd be, that'd be good.
Okay, sounds good.
We also have our next item on the agenda, which is the presentation of the award.
Oh, yes, well.
We have a presentation of 2022 Tree City USA Award and announcement of the activities, which you've already done. So we could do the presentation of the plaque to the city council.
Well, it's.
Can you tell us a little bit about that or?
Well, um, anytime you become a Tree City USA, there's certain standards that you have. You have to have things in place. You have to always have an Arbor Day celebration. You, um, have to plant trees. And it, you know, we've, we've been doing this a long time, 32 years and, um, when I went out and put the, um, they have some stickers that we put on our welcome signs. They only gave us two this year. But I noticed that the light was broke at this one, so I called Drew. And it's set up on a, a, uh, system where it's, you know, sunlight sets off the lights and it was completely broken off. So that means that that one wasn't shining up on, you know, when people come to Lamar, they wouldn't see welcome to Lamar, Colorado. So that's why I called him and he said he would probably call the, uh, Light and Power Company because I think they're the ones that did it. But anyways, the plaques, the plaque is like this and then I, I think I left it at home, but anyways, it'll have the year and that word Tree City Arbor, or Tree City USA, okay?
I'd like to give an opportunity for a vote over.
Keenan's been doing this for.
Oh, that's, then, well, I don't know. No, I don't know if it's that long. I doubt it, but anyway, you're welcome.
Tell me while.
You wanna break the camera again?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm not in the middle. No, just come on. Thank you. All right. Okay, thanks. Oh.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Hey Kirk, if I can make a comment on that, this kinda hit close to home because several years ago, my daughter was one of the recipients of the fifth grade.
She was, wasn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it was a squirrel.
Yep, I've still got that hanging in our house.
Very nice, yeah.
Okay.
And she had a good visit, didn't she?
Yes, she really did. Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, number three. Schedule a public hearing for the temporary modification of premises for Shay Emick doing business as Las Brisas. I'll leave this to the city clerk, Linda.
Okay, Shay Emick, owner of Las Brisas Restaurant, has requested a temporary modification of premise to her current liquor license to host a private party on May 6th, 2023, along with permission to use city property. She is requesting that Elm Street be blocked off from Main, Main Street to the alleyway between Main and Fifth Street. The area would be enclosed and fencing as required in prior modifications and special events. On March 16th, 2023, applicant submitted application with completed map of the premise showing area to be temporarily, temporarily modified to accommodate a private party. We are requesting area to be blocked from 8:00 AM on May 6th, 2023 to 10:00 AM on May the 7th, 2023. Um, we are requesting that the public hearing be held on April 24th of 2023 and, uh, it, it will be posted onsite and in the newspaper on April 13th.
Do we have a motion to approve the scheduling of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
All right.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of? Joe, I will get you a new remote.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move verbally. All right, agenda item number four, designation of representative to the county health pool. Each year, the county health pool, the CHP, requests that a members of the pool designate its individual as official representatives to attend all county health pool meetings and to send monthly invoices and general correspondence to the representative. Rob?
Yes, sir. As an annual requirement, and we usually just take the recommendation and they recommend that our HR manager, uh, Margaret Saldana, and so that's what I'm proposing to the council to accept, be our representative is Margaret.
Okay.
Margaret's aware of this.
Hmm, well, she, she doesn't make the meeting, she, she gets voluntold what to do, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve Margaret Saldana as the designate. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, next item on the agenda is an agreement of memorandum of understanding with Judge Lane Porter. Uh, this was to accept the agreement for his service. Is that correct, Kyle?
Correct, so it's a two-year agreement. Um, the value or the cost is the same to the city. Um, I believe it's 19,500, um, is the value, so that's, we're just asking for the extension to 2025.
So there's not been an increase since last year, from last year?
Nope, not since the last agreement.
Okay. All right, I've heard great things as far as Judge Porter taking care of, uh, the court very well and.
He does a very good job in our court and from everything that I know, he's very fair, um, in there also.
All right, counsel?
Move, we approve the agreement. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agreement. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Next item is proposed agreement for law enforcement and security services. Uh, this is also initiated by Chief Miller. Kyle, would you like to speak on this?
So this is just for the after-party or after-prom party. Um, that's when they're gonna be doing it. They'll be doing the PBTs for the first hour, making sure nobody's drinking whenever they come in. Um, we'll have two officers, I believe it is, at the actual prom itself and they'll transition over to the after-prom. I'm only requesting one for the after-prom just because it's only for the alcohol and then they'll be done. So we should have no problem filling this because it'll just be a continuation of the one we have with ice.
Okay, then you've reviewed the agreement, Lance?
I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Move, we approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, an ordinance of the city of Lamar, Colorado vacating a portion of the utility easement reserved by the city of Lamar, Colorado with ordinance 619 and by the city of Lamar, Colorado with ordinance 733. This is initiated by Stephanie Strube, our, uh, city building official. Stephanie?
Good evening. Um, so a little background on this, this is for the cobblestone. Uh, it was submitted by the Lamar Hospitality on January 6th. Um, the current sewer line that was on the property fell in the middle of the property and where the hotel was to be built. So it was necessary to vacate the current easement and let her, and move the sewer line to the outer edge and then recreate a new easement. Um, it was properly advertised in the Lamar ledger. Uh, the property was posted for the 15 days and a public hearing was held on March 21st with the planning and zoning. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to recommend to city council that a portion of the easement be vacated and a new easement put into effect.
So they had an easement before, we're just moving the location of the easement?
Correct.
Okay, any questions from the council?
So moved.
Oh, ordinance has to be read. I just got reminded. Great.
And this will.
Since we have the last opportunity to have Anne Marie read an ordinance, the very last time she can read one.
I gotta find it, uh.
I can send this down if you like.
Here it is, okay. An ordinance vacating a portion of utility easement reserved by city of Lamar, Colorado, ordinance number 733. Whereas proper application was made to the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Lamar, Colorado for vacation of a portion of utility easements, which are the subject of a reservation for utility easements of city of Lamar, Colorado ordinance number 619 and the city of Lamar, Colorado ordinance number 733. And whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Lamar, Colorado has considered a citizen, a citizen comments regarding vacating a portion of utility easements, which are the subject of a reservation for utility easements of city of Lamar, Colorado, ordinance 619 and city of Lamar, Colorado ordinance 733. And whereas a public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 21, 2023. And whereas the Pla- Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended to the city council that a portion of utility easement, which are the subject of a reservation for utility easements of city of Lamar, Colorado, uh, ordinance 619 and city of Lamar, Colorado, ordinance 733 be vacated consistent with the applicant's request. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of council of the city of Lamar, Colorado. One, that the portion of utility easement described as a portion of the alley vacated and reserved as a utility easement by ordinance 619, recorded as reception number 369565 and the right of way vacated and reserved as a utility easement by 730, ordinance 733, recorded as reception number 402962, being a portion of tract three of the land survey plat of Forest Park Place, recorded May 24th, 2000, as reception number 488769 of the official records of Powers County. records of Prowers County, State of Colorado, lying within the.
Southeast.
Southeast.
Quarter.
Quarter of section 30, township 22, south, range 46, west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the southeast corner of said tract three, thence along the south line of said tract three, south eighty-seven degrees fifty-six thirty-three west. Do I have to read the stuff in parentheses?
Barriers are be, yeah.
Barriers are based on the north line of tract three in the survey plat of Forest Park, recorded May 24th, 2000, recorded as reception, uh, number 488769 of the official records of Prowers County, State of Colorado, being monumented at the northwest corner of said tract three with one and one-half aluminum cap stamped 26978, flush with grade and measured to bear, south eighty-seven fifty-three twenty-three east, a distance of three hundred and ninety-two point five feet, a distance of one, a hundred and twenty-five point two-six feet to the point of intersection between the east line and said point also being the point of beginning, thence continuing along said south line, eighty, south eighty-seven degrees fifty-six thirty-six west, a distance of twenty seven hun, twenty-seven hundredths feet to the point of intersection between the west line of said utility easement and said south line, thence along said west line, north two degrees seventeen twenty-two west, a distance of a hundred and thirty-six point five-six feet to the northeast corner of said utility easement, recorded as reception 369565, and said point also being a point on the south line said of utility easement, recorded as, as reception number 402962, thence departing said west line, said, along said south line, south eighty-seven degrees fifty-six, uh, zero-three west, a distance of two hundred and thirty-one point four-three feet to a point on the west side of said tract three and said utility easement then, thence along said, um, west line, north two degrees nine thirty-five west, a distance of twenty-four point nine-seven feet to the, a point on the north line of said tract three and said utility easement, thence along said north line, north eighty-seven degrees fifty-three twenty-eight east, a distance of three hundred and ninety-two and a half feet to a point on the east line of said tract three and said utility easement, thence along said east line, south two degrees two twenty-three east, a distance of twenty-five foot, twenty-five feet to a point on the south line of said utility easement, thence along said south line, south eighty-seven degrees fifty-three, uh, fourteen west, a distance of a hundred and forty point seven-nine feet to a point on the east line of said utility easement, recorded as reception 369565, thence leaving said south line along said east line, south two degrees twelve foot fifty-five inches east, a distance of a hundred and thirty-six feet to the point of beginning, containing twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-five square foot or point two eight-eight acres more or less, be and hereby is vacated. Two, should a portion of the easement so vacated be determined in an alley or roadway of the town, now city of Lamar, Colorado, Lamar, Prowers County, Colorado, said the portion of the easement is so vacated, is vacated pursuant to CRS 43-2-303 subsection 1A. Three, that the city clerk and designated city employee are hereby instructed to make all necessary changes to the official map of the City of Lamar to reflect within vacation.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance at its first reading. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
With that said. With that said, I'll finish off the last part, introduced, read in full, passed on first reading and ordered published this 10th day of April, 2023, by the City of Lamar. So we'll get that going, and thank you, that was very good. That was a brutal one. Nothing like going out with a bang.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Oh, you have the next one, don't you?
I have the next two.
The next two. So agenda item number eight is approve addendum to original contract with Southeastern Colorado Builders dated January 25th, 2022. Uh, this was to discuss the breakdown of the WHO steel building that we had in place.
That is correct. Uh, so the original contract was to break down the WHO steel building located at 1,100 North Main Street, Lamar, and reassembled at a city location. It's an eighty-four by thirty steel building, and during the process of taking it down, it was found that there were a lot more panels that were rusted out and damaged than originally believed, and so it was recommended by, um, Southeastern Colorado Builders that we replace all the panels, not just, uh, the original roof panels, which is what I think was included in the original contract, uh, because it's listed as having a few panels replaced. Um, the cost would be fifteen thousand five hundred dollars to bring the building completely new. So, um, we'd like to recommend that city council review and approve the proposed addendum and have the mayor sign.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Stephanie?
One quick question for you. What's this building being used for now, presently? What do we?
What will it be used for? It'll be used for parks and, um, rec and also for, um, public works. They'll be sharing the building.
Storage mainly.
Storage, okay.
Yeah.
So it was the blue building that was on the, uh, WHO site. They, they took it down and moved it. They have a location next to the water tower tanks, and the pad's already laid, it's ready to be built on, is my understanding.
Correct.
But they will use that to store some of the chemicals for the water, water department and, as well as for.
Fertilizer.
Fertilizer, things of that nature. They're going to divide it out in the middle, is that right? Okay.
Are they going to just scrap the old panels?
Yes, that is correct.
So is the fifteen-five, is that for the just panels?
Just for the panels.
And their original contract was thirty-eight, thirty thousand eight hundred, and that was, they were anticipating doing some new panels with that, not all of them?
Correct, and that was mainly on the roof.
And that was installation and everything included, so this is just to include the fifteen thousand five hundred for.
New panels.
The additional panels.
That is correct.
Just the cost of the panels?
You have no, no additional new, um, installation costs? It's just replace the material.
Okay. So it's going to have this done in ninety days from April the 10th?
That's the goal. They will have to order this deal in, hopefully it won't be too long, once it's approved.
Hopefully, hopefully. You know how supply issues go.
Okay. So what's the council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to approve the professional services agreement between the City of Lamar, Colorado and Safe Built Colorado LLC. Stephanie?
Uh, so this agreement is for Safe Built to do plan reviews. Um, they would do the plan reviews for any new structures such as homes, or if we were to get any restaurants, any large commercial projects. Uh, they do charge, they would charge, um, seventy percent of our plan review fee, so it's based on our current rate and fee schedule. Um, we currently charge sixty-five percent of the total cost of the permit for a plan review fee, so that would be taken out of that portion.
It's subbing out plan reviews, and it's for just the complex ones. The, the really easy ones for fences and things like that, we, we wouldn't use them, but if Walmart came in, want to do major renovation and ask for a big permit, that's when we would go out and get somebody to help us with the plan.
And this would take the liability off the city, since they're doing it, is that correct, on these reviews?
Yeah, so I, I do have a little bit, um, of question on, on one of their sections, specifically number fourteen, and where they're disclaiming certain warranties, and, and I think largely, if those are unrelated to the specific work, which they would be providing us, I think that's acceptable, but it's a little unclear if they're trying to accept out the work they do for us as a disclaimer under their warranty of limited liability, as they put in section fourteen. So, um, if they're, if the council is approving, and I would just ask to approve it subject to any changes that I might have to that section.
You said we're going to use this company for.
The big plan review.
Homes also?
Yeah, like a, a brand-new home from the ground up.
Garage?
No.
Just a full. How long are we expected to, uh, use their services?
It's a one-year contract. It also has, uh, termination clauses in there that allow us to terminate, I believe it's ninety-day notice, and we can terminate the agreement if, if desired to do so. Um, it's automatic renewal in the event that the one year elapses and there's no termination.
Haven't we used these before?
Hmm, yes.
We have used safe.
Yes, and it's, it's a while back, but yes, we have.
Okay.
And it's always good to have another third party in case somebody's hurt or an accident or not, not available, and something comes in. I do plan, long-range, to have somebody, um, in a position to be able to do these things, and it'll probably be up to two years' worth of training before that.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
I'd just like to do the, who is Safe Built Colorado LLC?
The professional services?
Yeah.
It's, the Safe Built Colorado LLC, we did a.
Gary Amato?
Yep.
Is the CA, chief auditing of the CAO, Gary Amato?
It's a corporation out of Lotland, Colorado, it appears.
That's the most kind of corporate office, that's why.
Yeah. So what you found that?
I'm sorry.
So this is just a pay-as-we-go?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Who's going to determine as we go what projects need to go to this company?
Oh, we do. They don't, they don't get everyone that comes in, we just call them when we need them. Like, if somebody comes in applying for a permit, and we say, oh-oh, this is, you know, more than we're prepared to handle, that's when we call them and say, hey, we need you guys to do plan review.
So it would fall on Stephanie's shoulders?
Well, she's going to talk to me about it before.
Okay, sure.
Where did we get the company name from? Do we, did you get it from a reference, or, just out of curiosity?
Well, we had, had discussions about having additional services if we had a lot of them in a row, so we'd gone out and got several, uh, sort of bids and prices for what, you know, because we were looking at comparing some prices. Like, we, when Craig was, you know, retiring, what am I going to do until, for several months there, I didn't have anybody. So I went out and got several different prices, and some of them were outrageous. These guys, for plan reviews is not too bad. If they went out and did their actual inspections and things like that, that's, they have a pretty high price for that, but for their plan reviews is, is pretty good, since it's based off of our own, we're not going to be paying anything out of pocket, it's just we won't gain as much out of each one of these plan reviews.
Is there any way to maybe consider putting in a dollar amount of what is complex? I mean.
Like a cap?
I mean, a new house build, you know, we're looking at one fifty, uh?
I can give you an idea, like Walmart is doing their remodel, and they were charged over fifteen thousand for their plan review alone. That did not include their permit.
So what I'm, what I'm looking at is, you know, so it's just projects that require complex plan review, as an example, remodel of Walmart or new construction build. So the new construction build, that's a pretty broad spectrum. So is there maybe like a dollar amount that would say, you know what, if it's going to go over, the construction bill is over two hundred thousand dollars, that might be considered a new home, that's what we look at. But somebody who's saying, yeah, I do want to put in a garage or this, that, and they go, well, you know, who determines that? What's, what's a determining factor, just as a parameter? Other parameters we could possibly?
Well, if you go by money, that's an easy thing, you can say, we'll do it for everything over, but some of these projects, when they come in for a permit, it can cost a lot of money because of the size of it, but it's still simple. So somebody has to make that determination, and, you know, if.
That's the point.
That's, yeah, so we can do it, yes, by money.
Who makes the determination on? One person's going to say, well, my home was pretty simple, but they wanted me to do, you know, do it for my house, where, you know, he had a big garage built, and he didn't have to do it, and.
Well, I think they're going to have to do it either way. It's just, does Stephanie deal with her knowledge, or do we sub it out to these guys?
So that's what I'm saying, so if it is either way, it's, it's not the cost so much as it is, is who's determining what is and what is not?
It is the chief building official, and as she gets more knowledge, and she gets more of her classes, and she gets more, then she, each one of those things that she's able to handle is more and more complex, so at two, two years. So for right now, it's all dependent on whether she can handle it or not.
Do you understand the point I'm trying to make?
I do, and an example like a garage is you're not, you don't have to worry, it's not as complex for the, uh, energy code, for fire safety, for sprinkler systems, for, so there, that complexity is not there for a garage, per se, as there would be for a home and a business.
Maybe there'd be a little more clarity and understanding with that, so people know.
Right, come up with a better definition.
Would that be in the contract, or would that be in procedures or policies throughout what you're?
Well, that would be an internal thing, because we won't call them if we think we can handle it.
Right.
And if she decides, look, I can't handle it, then she's going to say, hey, I need to call Safe Built, and we'll, we'll call them. So if we want to have an internal policy about how, how we're going to determine whether we need help or not, then we can come up with something and, and, you know, say this is, let you guys know how we handle it.
So I guess that was a question, because we really want to put it in the contract, because they're just going to provide us the service if we ask for it.
I understand, yeah.
So we could do a policy, and then have that policy define what you're asking for.
But internal workings, if you guys want to know how we internally choose our own self.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Lance? Does it make sense what I'm asking for? I mean, if it's in a policy, then.
Yeah, I understand, I just think that there, there also needs to be some flexibilities for them to determine whether or not, that's a complex matter, and, and what that complex, what's going to drive that complexity will be determined by the project that someone's taking on, so I think each situation's unique, if there's, uh, I don't know that you could define it in a way that you're going to encompass everything, or you're going to exclude something that should have been included, so, uh, I could see it running afoul in both situations. So I think it, they're really an as-needed contractor consultant, and if there's a need, if they're, either of the city officials believe that the, this is a project that needs to be sent for some consulting, then, then you can get that feedback.
I'm not saying we don't need it, but what I'm saying is that when a person comes and suddenly they're saying, hey, we have to have it looked at by this company, they at least understand why.
So how, how much does this, what does this compare to what we would charge versus, what'd you say, seventy percent versus sixty-five percent?
Well, we would still charge our sixty-five percent.
Okay.
They are charging us seventy percent of our sixty-five percent.
So no additional costs?
So, no.
Okay.
And we're actually still.
We're just subbing.
Keeping some of the money in the city, it's just, yeah, a subcontractor.
Operational decision, that's something that I do, and I can rely on her expertise, and if I need an internal memo, so you guys know how I do things here, I can get something out and let you guys know how I'm doing, but if you guys want to prescribe it, I can do that as well.
We have a budget for it.
Really, it's not, it doesn't change the permit fee for anybody.
Nope, not at all.
That stays the same, no matter what, whether you do it, whether somebody else does it, the only difference is clarifying when we send it out compared to when we keep it in-house.
Correct.
And that would be determined, as of right now, it had been determined between you and Rob, but we can have Rob kind of clarify that for the council moving forward, if that's what.
I'll get some criteria, and I'll put it up there.
I also have a question. Um, where are we at with Craig Brooks on this? Are we still retaining him as a consultant as well? And now we're going to put another consultant on the books?
No, Craig Brooks was only retained as a consultant because he had institutional historical knowledge of ongoing projects. He is no longer a person that we ask for advice on what we do in the future and things like that. He had some. advice on what we do in the future and things like that. He had some business with what we did in the past, and so we set him to finish up projects. And he had mentioned the Safe Built before. This is not based off of whether Craig Brooks is, we haven't consulted him on whether we need to do this or not, and so he's not, he's not involved in this city.
So, this is a temporary thing, just for Stephanie to get up to speed, and then she'll be the soul?
I'd like to see a term limit on this then, not just a recurring renewal. I'd like to see
Two years.
We have to visit it again. I would like to visit with it every year.
It is. It's annual renewals. So, if we get it in a year, we'll do it.
So, I'd like to point out that in the future, we could have a very sophisticated construction project that would be outside of anybody's scale and scope, and we still may want to use this.
A big project.
And we didn't do that with the cobblestone end, did it?
That is correct.
Well, we did with the hospital as well.
And the hospital?
Why would we?
There was a large, we got a large
So, I don't think we would need to drop them. It's just, we would have to determine
We would have less and less opportunities for us to call.
Well, we only pay them when we use them.
Just when you
So, it isn't like it's, we're paying a fee to them constantly.
Yeah. So, where are we at to get this approved? In number 14, back to number 14 that Lance spoke about, with limits of liability. So, Lance, you made a suggestion there. We just need to approve or do a motion
Subject to any
Subject to any changes.
Right?
Yeah. Subject to any changes of the city attorney.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any last questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right. So, we have miscellaneous items here. Do we have any miscellaneous items or questions that need to be answered or anything like that that we need to discuss?
Somebody had an accident that they wanted to talk to.
That is still in the works. I don't know how detailed I should get on that works, but we could just leave it as it's in the works right now. So, we plan on giving an update here in the near future and what the process is and what the status is of the work, but it is still in the works. So.
No ETA?
No ETA yet. So, we're hoping to have more definitive information for you in the upcoming meeting. We hope to have it today, but we're waiting for some final information. So, okay.
When you use Safe Built, do they insure, and are they insured? Is it an additional insurance?
Yes.
And where their limits of liability, what insurance do they have? Self-insured reinsurance or what protections the city have?
It's in their agreement. Okay. And you can get a copy of that. I mean, we have copies of that, so. All right. And it was in the agreement that we reviewed. So, all right. With that said, we will take a short recess in between this and our executive session to have some treats and goodies for Anne Marie's retirement from the council. End of her tenure. You know, I gotta do, I really do need to take a minute and say, everything that she's done has been very appreciated. She's been on this council. She is the second-longest-running person on this city council right now. I've been on it for 14 years. She's been on it for 12 years now. So, I'm not sure when the next oldest will be. Will that be Emmanuel or?
Jerry.
Jerry? Jerry? How many years, Jerry? I didn't know which one came first. So, how many years?
Jerry.
How old, how many years have you been on? Do you know?
I do. I do.
I'm sorry.
Quite a few years. Eight or nine.
I never saw you black.
I got all this gray hair from it.
Yeah. So, you know, it's really great when you have council members that have a long tenure on the council. It brings that knowledge and experience. There's a lot to learn as being a council member and learning how the city works, and having that history is very helpful. So, I do, we will miss Anne Marie. I'm glad she's gonna be part of the city team, but we can't thank her enough for her 12 years of service. Even though everybody says it's such a wonderful job to be on the council, it's very thankless in many, many times over. So, you know, it's for what we receive on being a council member. It takes a lot to be on here sometimes, and we truly appreciate your 12 years of service. With that said, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move into the executive session for discussion of personnel matters with the city administrator under CRS Section 246402 Subsection 4 Subsection F, and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiations under CRS Section 246402 Subsection 4 Subsection E, which is regarding economic negotiations and updates with ongoing property negotiations. So, there will not be any decisions coming out of this executive session. So, immediately following the executive session, we will just adjourn. So, there's no reason to continue our feed since we'll be just adjourned directly. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So, we will move on, and we hope to see you on the next meeting, Monday, April 24th, 2023.